Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December 2017 City Council meeting. So good to have you all here. Special presentation of our colors this evening will be done by Bear Den number two of PAC 129. They will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And how about you that are holding the Indiana flag? Tell us what's so important about today.
It's Indiana's birthday.
It is Indiana's birthday. What year?
Eighteen.
The year it started.
The year we were returned to a state, December 11th?
Eighteen sixteen.
Eighteen sixteen. Very good. It's great. Okay. Please rise and we will say the pledge. And we're very honored, following that, to have Mrs. Marlene Pedego, the Eagle Creek Evangelical Friends Church, will lead us in a word of prayer. Scouts?
Color guard, post the colors. Um, scouts, please. May you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard retreat.
Please rise for prayer. Just to remind you, the den leader is Mr. Seth Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton and Cub Scouts, thank you so much for that very special presentation.
Before the prayer, you want to come forward? Want to shake your hand?
I'm delighted to bring greetings from Eagle Creek Friends, one of the oldest churches in the city of Westfield, which was started in 1840. Talking about history tonight. I'd like to invite us into a word of silence and behind that, a prayer for beginning the meeting. Dear Lord, we're so thankful for the opportunity to gather. We're thankful for all the blessings that you have provided this last year. And we're so grateful for this country that we have. We pray for it. And we thank you, Lord, that our forefathers years ago came to this country seeking a holy experiment and provide us with religious freedom that we enjoy. And we pray for our country today and we pray for peace. We pray and thank you, Lord, for the city of Westfield, all the new families and new children that call this community home. And we pray for our families and for ourselves. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you have given us. And we're particularly mindful this Christmas season of the blessing of, again, your greatest gift, Jesus Christ. And we pray these things in his name and in his honor. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. President Aide, your meeting, sir?
All right, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you very much. The chair will make note that there's no changes to the agenda tonight. And so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our last council meeting. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to accept the minutes of November 13, 2017 into the record as written.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Bob Horkey, a second by Mark Keen. Any discussion, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I call for the vote. Those in favor of approving the minutes as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on to claims. I entertain a motion to approve the claims as stated.
I'd be happy to move to approve the claims of December 11, 2017, as they are in front of us.
Okay. I have a motion by Bob Horkey. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made. Steve Hoover seconded it. Is there any discussion?
I have one question, and I've gotten a little bit of information today. It's from Fund 641, supplemental reserve for Gaylor Electric. Anyone from staff here that wants to help out? Mr. Bertrand, maybe?
Counsel, if you would, remind me what that sum total is on the invoice there?
It is...
Three hundred and some thousand dollars?
Yeah, and I was just wondering, has that work been done and was it bid?
Completed, and it's also facilitated a flower and patio show, or a fall patio show inside of the G-Pec. So those were the accommodations that we made the upgrades, that this council approved, that expenditure. Not that specific expenditure, but a not-to-exceed spend out of that particular fund.
Do you recall how much that was?
The total authorization?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look at the notes. It was not more than a million dollars, I can tell you that. Because inside of that purchasing package was $560,000 for the hard surface flooring that also facilitated the utilization of that particular non-sport show.
Okay, because I understand that these improvements were needed, but I didn't know that they were going to be this much. I didn't know how that got through there, so I'm just trying to understand.
I think the other part of that was we wanted to upgrade the suites, and that was part of that, to enhance our rent collection and make it a more viable facility for multipurpose uses, which we hadn't been contemplated in the beginning, so... Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion before us. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I ask you to approve the claims by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Claims are approved. Seven zero. We have no miscellaneous business tonight, and so will our special presentation. So we'll move right into old business. And under old business, we have ordinance 17 dash 47. We had a council introduction, and we'll have a public hearing tonight. Chief Reed?
Mr. Mayor, President Aide, Counsel. I'm here tonight asking you to adopt ordinance 1747's additional appropriation fire fund in tune of $270,000. In the introduction, Chief of Staff Bertrand outlined the two major components to that, which were personnel costs and a software program that we added this year. I'm certainly be willing to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
With the payroll expenses, was it an underestimation of overtime hours that would be required primarily?
Yes and no. I guess how I would answer that is that we really had... It was a perfect storm in terms of, we've got, I want to count it here. One, two, three, four, five. Five folks that we had in terms of long-term disability kinds of things, like injuries, elective surgeries, back injury. And then we had somebody who was, one of our firefighters was deployed for well over half of a year there. So those were all, if you think about, we still have to have people in a seat, but we're still paying for some of those folks. So that really is what, that's really what drove the overage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Reed? Hearing none. This does require a public hearing tonight. And I will open the public hearing at 7:11 PM. If anybody would like to speak to this issue, do we have any cards? Anybody wishing to speak at this time, may come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing at 7:12 PM. All right. This is up for adoption consideration tonight. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 17 dash 47?
Second.
I have a motion by Steve Hoover, a second by Cindy Spuljery. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. That concludes the portion of old business tonight, and we do move into new business. Our first item up on the agenda is ordinance 17 dash 48, amended traffic ordinance. This is council introduction tonight by Jeremy Lawler, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Before you tonight, for introduction, is ordinance 17 dash 48. It's an amendment to the traffic ordinance. As you know, we regularly monitor our intersections and the safety of our traveling public. We generally will package these proposed changes periodically throughout the year and amend the ordinance a couple of times. This is the second one we've done this year. The cover sheet is a summary of our changes. There are five changes. There are four intersections whose traffic patterns were changed. They will either go to, from a two-way stop to a four-way stop based on volume of traffic and/or site distance type issues. Additionally, there is a no parking change on Bridgewater Club Boulevard. I do want to note that there is a typo on the cover sheet. It says 169th Street. That is actually 161st Street. And that will be revised and modified before the adoption consideration. So with that, I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, councilors.
What's the most dangerous intersection in Westfield?
Well, it was Casey Road and State Road 32, but as you know, we closed that and moved it, moved the interchange down to Ditch. I would fall back on the police department. They deal with that a lot more frequently than I do. But generally, our top, five of our top 10, if not more than that, are all associated with State Road 32.
I'm curious about World Creek Road and 32.
I know there was an accident there recently, but I don't have the crash data to really be able to speak to it.
Any other questions? This is up for adoption consideration on January 8th, and thank you. Ordinance 17 dash 49, amended park and recreational impact fees. Mr. Lawler?
Thank you again. Ordinance 17 dash 49, amending the park and recreational impact fee. According to Indiana code, we have to update our ordinance and zone improvement plan on a five-year basis. We recently did a park master plan update, and that is the foundation for the zone improvement plan that was supplementally attached to the ordinance. Based on that information, we are proposing a slight increase from $1,309 to $1,427 per residential or apartment building permit. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, I have Jesse Pullman from On Point Land Matters, who is our consultant that put together our zone improvement plan for us. He's here tonight to answer any questions that you may have as well.
All right. Thank you.
Also, this will be a public hearing at the Plan Commission on the 18th.
18th.
All right, very good. Councilors, any questions?
Do you recall the last time we raised park impact fees?
The last ordinance that we did was approved in 2012, which was the 2013 fee, and it has escalated slightly since then. So the last time it went up was at the beginning of 2017.
Got it. And that, so that approval also had a ramp.
It had an escalator in it as well. For this particular proposal, we have included a 2% annual increase based on the cost of living or cost of construction increase.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. This will move on to the APC here.
Thank you.
The next item up for business is ordinance 17 dash 50, the Trails Planned Unit Development Amendment. Dane?
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you is an introduction of ordinance number 17 dash 50, proposed amendment to District B of the Trails Planned Unit Development, which is located at the hard southeast corner of State Road 32 and Oak Ridge Road. The proposed amendment modifies the minimum side yard setback as well as the minimum gross floor area of structures within the district. Jesse Pullman from On Point Land Matters is here to make a brief presentation on behalf of the petitioner, and I'm available. Are there any questions of staff afterwards? Thank you.
Good evening, president, members of the council. For the record, my name is Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, presenting this evening on behalf of Birch Dalton and Edge Rock Development, who was unable to be here this evening due to a coaching conflict. I'll keep my presentation short with just a few comments in addition to those of Mr. Crabtree's. When the PUD was adopted, the intent was that the canopy design that connected the two structures would create the visual effect of a single building that exceeded 5,000 square feet, and that's consistent with the requirements of the State Road 32 overlay. The verbiage of the ordinance at that time was narrowly written based on the preliminary concept plan that showed a Starbucks of around 2,500 square feet, and then the connected Chops Building, which was anticipated to be larger, around 5,000 square feet. Since then, the site's been fully engineered and now reflects the additional site constraints, such as the site's access and parking, as well as the design of the access road and legal drain reconstruction. Furthermore, the building's design's been refined based on tenant input. This has resulted in a smaller combined building footprint of around 6,000 square feet rather than the original 7,500 square feet. So as a result, this text amendment's requested to accommodate the proposed design, which we believe will still continue to create the visual effect of a single building in excess of 5,000 square feet while maintaining the same building theme and architecture as was originally presented in the original PUD ordinance. So with that, if you have any questions or comments that we can take with us here this evening as we go through the public process, I'd be more than happy to take those with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Any council comments? Hearing none, this will move on to the APC. Thank you. Next item up for business is ordinance 17 dash 52. This also is a council introduction. The Davis Planned Unit Development District and Pam Howar presenting for the city.
Thank you, counsel. Before you this evening, for introduction, have a proposed Planned Unit Development District known as the Davis PUD. This 80-acre site is located on the west side of Ditch Road between 156th and 161st Streets, adjacent to the Harmony and West Rail subdivisions. The plan proposes a maximum of 145 single-family residential lots with an underlying zoning of SF3. The proposed ordinance specifies lot and architectural standards and also incorporates a concept plan and character exhibits for both the home and amenity improvements. This will be eligible for public hearing on January 2nd and could be in front of you for adoption in February. I do have Brian Stumpf at this time, who would like to make a brief presentation, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Brian Stumpf with 11th Street Development, here on behalf of my client, Estridge Homes, who is purchasing and developing this site. This is a new mixed residential development that is hitting a need in the market for the homes that Estridge has in Harmony, immediately to the south. There have actually been requests coming about for a higher price point product than what is offered in Harmony, and this seeks to answer that demand. The property shows new suburban residential on the comprehensive plan. There's 145 homes on the site. The entrances align with West Rail to the east and Section 5 of Harmony to the south. We have a... Our main central boulevard that comes through the site here identifies as a focal point. We've got a open, an amenity center, excuse me, that will serve the community. We'll have a pool and a possibly a media room. We're working on the details of that. One of the reasons that we've done the clustering that you, the PUD, is so we have some variety in the lot sizes. One of the things that is, we've heard in Harmony, is that all the lots are exactly the same size. What we've done here is allowed some deeper lots. These will actually have landscape easements along the back, so we'll still be able to do buffering and sheltering from the road, but provide a variety of lot sizes. That's also happening over here on the west side of the property. And there are two different home collections in the community. To the south, we have empty nester homes. These will be active adult empty nester homes. About half of the homes within the community will be of this type. Lots are going to be a minimum of 70 feet wide. And the homes in this collection have a mixture of front load and courtyard garages. And the expected price range for the homes will be between $500 and $600,000. To the north on the larger lots are family homes. Those will be on lots that are a minimum of 90 feet wide. And all the homes in this collection will be side-load homes. So here's some of the character exhibits for the family homes. And the family homes and the empty nester homes all follow the same architectural requirements. So much like in Harmony, where we have the same standards across both communities. So on the family homes that you see here, these will be, have a price range between $550,000 and $650,000. And again, focusing on the architectural character and extension of what you have known in Harmony. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thanks.
All right, Brian, thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Do you anticipate these homes having basements?
Yes, we do. I expect, I don't know if all of them will have basements, but the majority of the homes in Harmony that Estridge is building have basements, and I would expect that that will continue. That's just common for this price point.
Probably the empty nester product as well?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about timing of the process on this one? I see that it's up for hearing on January 2nd, along with the next one as well, and I believe that's yours too?
Yes.
Yeah. And given that that's the day after New Year's Day, and we're in the holiday season now, wondering if you would perhaps consider moving that to the following APC meeting in January, to the second one, and having your neighborhood meeting somewhere after New Year's?
I'd have to talk to my client on that, as far as the timing of that. This is, we're planning on having the neighborhood meeting here this month, and then we'll find lines on that date, and that notice will go out here by Wednesday. And I just would need to talk to them about timing on that. I do believe this will obviously take a couple of meetings. We're expecting a few meetings at the Plan Commission, so...
We have so many people who travel and have other commitments during this time, so it's very hard for them to follow the process and be able to participate. So I'd just request that you could change that if possible.
And I would go along with what Cindy said too, because I think 16th would still give time to get to the council in February if everything goes as you would plan it to be. But the holidays are certainly a concern for people to get their voices heard.
I think, Brian, it's in your best interest to consider that request.
I'll talk to Estridge about that.
Brian, are all these homes going to face on Ditch Road? Will the backs beat a ditch road?
Yes, what we've done along Ditch is, it's hard to tell at this scale, just given you've got an 80-acre site transformed down to a 5-by-7 image of that. But we have quite a bit of distance here between the homes. And we'll detail this out, how the landscape easements and the buffering work along here. There actually is a curve to this road. I know it's hard to tell at the scale, but there's a curve to the road. And so these homes get set back upwards of, you know, 200 feet from the asphalt there on the side. So we'll have some more detail on that when we come to the Plan Commission that illustrates it better than just this conceptual plan, which is really trying to show the districts. Unfortunately, Estridge is not here. I don't anticipate an issue with extending it two weeks out for the hearing. I understand the concern, so...
Oftentimes, the concern is, what if there are public hearing comments that need some time to address? January is a five Monday month, so there's actually three weeks in between that date and the potential next date. So you don't have just the short filing deadline that would come with a two-week turnaround. You've got a three-week turnaround.
Well, I understand, believe me, I understand the January 2nd concern on the rough night for a meeting. I think that'll be, I think we can do that. I'll go out on a limb here.
I was just going to say, go out on a limb.
But yeah, I'll say that I will agree to that with the consequences if that's an issue for my client.
Okay. All right. And I think it's, I've seen some correspondence. I think it's important. The council introduction process is something that we would like to continue, and it's something that we like to be presented with so we understand what is coming or what possibly could happen. But by no means do we endorse or send any kind of message to APC. But it's at the petitioner's discretion to present to us, and then you certainly have a right to go on to the APC with... So we're neutral in our presentation, and we don't pick winners and losers. I think there's a process here, and we want... I think there's a process here, and we want, we know you have that right to move on to APC. And if there was something blatantly irresponsible or something that was totally, didn't meet with our comp plan, we would not give a recommendation. But we're going to remain neutral. We don't pick winners and losers, and so I just want you to understand the gravity of giving the public time to respond over the holidays, because everybody's busy and traveling and other things. So we appreciate your consideration tonight.
Yeah, not a problem.
Anything else, counsel?
Just as, as part of the APC process, I think that we definitely need to consider the rear of these homes that face our thoroughfares and give them some extra consideration architecturally or whatever, however we arrive at the appropriate solution for that. So I, I just think that's, that will be more discussion at APC regarding that.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Brian. So moving on, Brian, to the ordinance seventeen dash fifty-three, or Pam, excuse me. This is up for council introduction tonight as well.
Yes, thank you and good evening. Before you this evening, we have for introduction a new planned unit development district known as the Chance PUD. This fifty-four acre site is located at the southwest corner of one sixty-sixth street and Ditch Road across from the Derby Ridge subdivision. The proposed ordinance specifies lot and architectural standards and also incorporates a concept plan as well as character exhibits for the proposed homes. The plan proposes a maximum of one hundred and seventeen single-family residential lots with a underlying zoning of SF-three. Again, I have Brian Stumpf here who will like to make a brief presentation, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Evening, members of the council. Brian Stumpf with Eleventh Street Development, representing myself on this one. This is a project of mine, working with the Chance family on this property. The, as Pam mentioned, it's a fifty-four acre site that we are planning a maximum of one hundred and seventeen homes. The predominant home type on here is a empty nester product that you see on, on the lots that is, on lots that are a minimum of sixty-five feet wide. The prices for these homes will range, so here's some of the examples of the ranches and the active adult empty nester. The price ranges of these homes will be three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. And then on the, that's about three quarters of the site. As, as it's designed, the, these areas, the darker yellow lots here are family homes that are, again, following the, following the styles that you see here. We're looking at these to, they'll all have side load garages and will be in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar price range. David Weekly Homes is the builder for both collections of the homes in this neighborhood. Enjoyed working with them in Harmony, and they've done a great job, and I was glad to see that they want to participate on this project. The, as Pam mentioned, the, the PUD and plan uses a SF-three based zoning district. We have clustered the lots so that we can preserve the wooded area, whatever the wood area here in the northwest portion of the site, as well as have a layout in which almost all the lots in the community back up upon open space. We've been very cautious, again, scale can be a little misleading here, but, but with the dimensions we have here, we're, we're at least seventy-five feet from the edge of the pavement. This is back almost four hundred and fifty feet back to where the, the main entry into the community. So we've got lots of open space along Ditch Road, along one hundred and sixty-sixth street. We've had an extra or an additional, additional width to this buffer in order to do mounding and protection, create a strong streetscape here. This aligns with the entrance on the illustrious plan for Akerston Farms, and this aligns with Derby Ridge to the east. Just with that, I'm available to any comments you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Any comments?
I just have a question for my edification. Define for me an empty nester house and, and why you label it as such?
Yeah, it tends to be that the main buyer is a baby boomer. So you've got a, a couple that has, their kids have grown up and, and moved away. And they, what we're seeing, especially in this market, is that they're no longer in need for a large house, a large lot. What we're experiencing, what Weekly has experienced, is a lot of home buyers are looking for a well-done home that tends to be a ranch, may have a, you know, a basement or an upstairs, but it does not have a, a high child population.
Would you characterize them all as having first floor masters?
I'd have to check with the, I don't know the details. I can get that answer for you.
I mean, that's one thing that I would consider addressing, empty nester type product, would be first floor masters.
Is there an amenity center with this project?
We're not expecting a, an amenity building. I am working with the builder to see what types of amenity would best fit the, the profile of their buyer. So we're looking at trails in the, in the community and potentially a gathering or a meetings place on the site. So that, that's, we're still working on exactly what that is.
Any other comments?
I have one. I just want you to be aware, in fact, just kind of to confirm, we spoke a little earlier about this, that earlier this year, there was another proposal brought forward on this same parcel. And after some discussion with several of us, that that particular developer decided that it was not a good time as we suggested. So I just want you to keep that in mind.
And then, Brian, the same would hold true with the public meetings?
Yes, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll do this in the second meeting at the planning commission in January.
And you'll commit to that?
Yes.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Brian. Next item is ordinance seventeen dash fifty-four, the twenty eighteen elected official salary ordinance. Prince, Mr. Zager?
Yes, sir. First, there's a typo on the adoption consideration. It's not anticipated to be adopted tonight, is my understanding.
So we could adopt this then at the twenty, December twenty-seventh meeting? Okay. All right. All right. Does council have any questions? I'd recommend we move this to the December twenty-seventh meeting for council adoption. Any other discussion? Any objection? All right. Thank you. Next item is twenty seventeen write-offs, and this bears a little bit further discussion as to policy. And so I will table this until we've had that opportunity to discuss this. So it'll be tabled for now. Then the other item on the agenda is the approval of the twenty eighteen council meeting dates. So you've all had a chance to look. This is just an ascent. Do we all agree that those council meeting dates are appropriate? Any questions? Then we will adopt that schedule for the twenty eighteen council meeting dates. And then I want to announce tonight that our last council meeting of the year will be scheduled for December twenty-seventh at eight AM in this chamber. And that's an opportunity for us to clear up year-end finances and encumbrances and prove the paying of the last bills for this year. So please make note of that. It will be posted on our website, city website. At this time, residents who wish to address the council on non-agenda items may do so at this time. Anybody would care to come forward?
My name is Mike Johns. I'm with the Bainbridge Homeowners Association. Over the last couple of months, we've had the opportunity to meet with, I think, all the council members and discuss several topics of concern with our, with our, with our association. One of those topics was the traffic signs at one hundred and fifty-first street and Greyhound Pass. And then also the traffic markings around the new roundabout by the Target at one hundred and fifty-first street. We just wanted, we were, had a meeting last week. We wanted to thank all the council members for, number one, participating in our meetings, but also for your influence to get those traffic signs installed. The new stop signs at one hundred and fifty-first street with the flashing red light stop sign seems to be, I mean, it's really doing the trick. And we, we just feel that it's going to be a huge safety issue, and we, we'd like to thank the council and Westfield. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I would just like to thank you for your hospitality when we came over and met with your group, and we enjoyed meeting your residents over there. I, I'm speaking for myself, but I hope I'm speaking for other council members. So thank you for being here tonight. We're glad we could get that taken care of, those couple of items. All right. This time, are there any other city council comments? Mr. Hoover?
I can report briefly on the APC meeting of December fourth. We approved Osborne Trails Development Plan and Site Plan. We held public hearings on the Westchester PUD, the Spring Mill Station Southwest Corner PUD Amendment, the GPEC PUD Amendment, and the PUD for Hiddle at thirty-one, as well as the Development Plan and Site Plan for that same location. That was it.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any other council comments? All right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ake. Let me go through several things here. Had our first snow, wasn't much, but I did not get to mount plow on the yellow Jeep, so I was very disappointed. Doing something a little different this year, Jeremy and his crew. If you noticed, all of our streets bore stripes.
I was wondering if they could be red for the Christmas season?
Jeremy?
Uh, probably.
Okay. This is a new system that Jeremy and his people looked at, and that it is a, it is a, meant to pre-salt the streets with a liquid brine in lieu of spreading loose gravel-like salt that disperses with traffic. It was a huge success, just enough snow, I think, we got to test it really well. And what, what it, what it does is we can prepare the whole city with a pre-salting that lasts for a couple of days at least. Results in considerable savings. To pre-salt all of the city streets, it takes ten thousand tons. Is that right, ten, ten tons of salt? Gallons, as opposed to?
Two hundred tons of salt.
Two hundred tons of salt. So we use ten tons to two hundred.
Ten tons of salt compared to two hundred?
So you can see the huge savings right there, which will pay for his new experiment quite readily. So nice job, Jeremy, in taking the next step and doing the, the snow removal. The, keep this fact in mind, five thousand two hundred and fifty. That's how many lights are out here on this tree. And special thanks to our parks people. They did, in Public Works, they did a wonderful job on a very warm evening. I know a few years ago, it was bitterly cold. I, we had a great turnout. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there. We had a family Christmas that, that night out of town. But I hear it was a great success. And we had, I know Santa and Mrs. Claus and the music, and Todd, Todd lit the tree. And it was a great time in downtown. It'll only get better every year with our Grand Junction as we get closer to that. And also with Christmas this time year, for the first time, we have, we are collecting letters written to Santa Claus. And those letters may be deposited at the Public Safety Building, at the City Service Building. And if Santa gets those by the eighteenth, every letter will be responded to by Santa Claus himself, of course. You can help the Westfield Youth Assistance Program in assembling holiday gifts. Take unwrapped board games until this Friday. Dropped off City Services, the GPEC at Graham Park, Public Safety, or the School Admin Building. Help our less fortunate kiddos out there. We were just pleased to announce that Westfield was, was ranked one of the safest cities in Indiana and really the entire country. I think we sometimes take that for granted. Chief Rush and his people just do a fabulous job of, of prevention. It's not newsworthy, it's not sexy, because you can't prove what you have prevented. And, but if you look at statistics, and as was just proven, his people are doing just that. Thank you very much, Chief Rush. New roundabout, one eighty-six and Spring Mill, will, scheduled to be open Friday. Everything goes, goes well. That was just a forty-five day closure, so I believe that, that contractor, I think it was Great X, did a, did a great job getting that done in time for the holidays. And along with the cooperation with Hamilton County Tourism, Graham Park was just featured in a spread in a national magazine, a sports destination magazine, so. And speaking Graham Park, I want to say this. We, we get, I get a lot of questions, you know, is Graham Park, is it, is it doing what it's supposed to do? And, and, yes, it is, in several ways. You see the economic development that it's bringing in. It's creating the commercial tax base that we need to have. We're on schedule there. The, the operations of Graham Park are better than a break even on the overall day in, day out. Money's in and money out. And probably the, one of the biggest compliments I think we've had to the success of, of financials in working with our private sector partners. If you notice, we put out a press release, I think about a week ago, announcing a two-point-five million dollar investment at Graham Park where we're replacing all of the dirt in the baseball fields with synthetic turf. Bluntly, the Indianapolis Business Journal did a lousy job in presenting the, the facts. The headline read, "Massive cancellations result in Graham Park investing this money." In truth, massive cancellations was, baseball suffered one weekend of cancellations. They had many weekends of rain where they had to reschedule, but did not lose games. And their, the reason to remove- And there, the reason to remove the dirt and put down the turf was because of the massive costs of labor to constantly dry and get the dirt back in shape. But the key point is here, is that the bullpen, the Indiana Bulls, are putting two-point-five million dollars of their money into our property at Graham Park, not the city. And I think that speaks immensely to the success of one of our private sector partners at the park. And finally, Merry Christmas to all of you. I know we'll have a short meeting, but that's after Christmas, is it not?
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh, yes. So Merry Christmas to all of you, counsel, to all of you attendees.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Can see counsel echoes those greetings, and we hope you have a wonderful Christmas and happy holiday, and be safe. At this time, I call for adjournment. Those in favor of adjourning, signal by saying aye. Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.